Okay, so I will now call to order. The business meeting scheduled for January 10th following the organization meeting. Ms. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Okay, first item is to approve the agenda. Any questions, comments, or adjustments to the agenda? We've got three items for discussion. Diversity Committee requirements, workers comp. We will have an executive session, but we will return back into session and take action, potentially, before we adjourn. So no changes to agenda, except the motion to approve measures.
Still moved.
One second.
One second.
Please call the roll. Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Okay, so the first item for discussion is diversity committee update. I believe Todd Corley will come forward and give us an update on the workers that committee. Thank you. Everyone should have hard copy materials that were distributed throughout.
Good evening to the board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to watch that clock to make sure that I don't go over my time. Mr. O'Brien, congratulations. So I'll take you through the report. We hope that this is the first of many to update the board on the diversity initiative for the district, which has gotten a lot of attention. And I think what you'll find, you'll find a lot of worthwhile updates about where we are, what's been happening since we have put it together. With the leadership of Dr. Lucas, which is really where this began, the committee was just essentially formed to identify and work with the district to make sure that we carry through on the values of the district, about respecting differences throughout the district, the students, the parents, all those that are coming into the district. So what you'll see in that mission statement is just essentially that overview. What you'll notice is the district leadership in diversity is essentially Dr. Lucas, obviously, Gail Marsh, myself, and Heather Camacho. And the differences between my role and Heather's role is essentially this: I have a day job, so this work for me is completely volunteer. I do bring a wealth of knowledge, I think, from the diversity perspective, which I'll share with you, but Heather's role is internal, also as a teacher, but to make sure that the buildings are aligned and having the conversation daily about what the district can do. So before I move on forward to that, my bio is in the back, but I won't go back there. I'll just tell you what it is, essentially. I've been doing this work for about 15 years. I've been doing diversity work on the corporate side for the most part of that. The last eight years I've spent as the Global Diversity Officer at Abercrombie &amp; Fitch, charged with the work that was then daunting to even create the initiative from the script, from ground up. So my role has essentially been making sure that the brand resonates with people from different backgrounds, making sure that the recruiting strategy that we have as a company was one that allowed us to get talent from different backgrounds, but also to make sure that our associates felt included. And not just from the perspective of race and gender, but sexual orientation, religion, disabilities, all those things that matter and make the conversation around diversity a really full conversation. So that's my background. I'm a parent. We have two children in the district. Our daughter is at Brookshire, which should be said about the loss, and our son is at Cheshaw. Professionally, I've gone over that. Education background, time at Dartmouth, Georgetown, LeMoyne College, and Syracuse City. So that's me in a nutshell, but again, there's more in the back that you can peruse through. So I'll get through the meat of it and the reason why we're here. The committee is structured with four different committee groups: curriculum and instruction, professional development, training, recruitment, and support for families. I will go through what those committees are charged to do throughout the presentation, but essentially, as you see it, this committee as a whole, which is made up, again, of volunteers, some parents, some teachers, some administrators, just really give their time and they meet. And they meet in a format of committee meetings one month, large group meeting the other month, so we alternate. As you go through it, what we've done as a committee, first and foremost, is to create a strategy. And that strategy is in eight parts, and these first four I'll go through. And again, I think what you'll see in this conversation is that it all blends together. There's not really one driver or one committee that's doing all the work, because they have to really work together and in combination. So from the measurement perspective, training and education, policy integration, and communication, whether internal or external, those four drivers essentially mean, we need to first measure what we're doing. We need to look at how many teachers we have, what are from different racial and ethnic backgrounds. We need to keep aware of the trend of students who are coming into the district, they'll respond to them and their cultural needs, and that we're also holding each other accountable for our behavior. So that's the measurement and accountability piece. For the training and education part, that's really to look at how do we make sure we train our teachers, our administrators, on how to create inclusive classroom experiences? How do they make sure that they hold themselves accountable to learn how to have those difficult conversations that often have to happen when you think about differences in interacting with people from different backgrounds? Policy integration driver, if you will, or strategy, is if there isn't alignment with board policies or school policies that would support people's differences, we need to identify what they are, uncover them, if you will, and try to make sure that we make those tweaks. So when you think about some of the things that have happened recently with language to the curriculum and looking at how we support differences, those are the type of integrational, integration policies that we're trying to look at. From the communication and then perspective, internal and external, what that essentially means is, as we think about how we talk about this initiative inside our buildings, but also how we talk about it to the community, we have to have a consistent conversation. So if Dr. Lucas's message around diversity and inclusion says that we're trying to filter the value differences, that we support them, then you would want to make sure that that conversation is happening from the building principal to his or her teachers as well, so that there is alignment with what we say we're doing and what we're actually doing. The next four: leadership engagement, student engagement, community engagement, partnership opportunities, essentially mean what they say. Having the visible and active leadership of Dr. Lucas or building principal is huge, because people take their cues from what they see when they walk in and pick up their kiddo. So if they see and they hear that there are things that are happening, that the leadership is supporting or not supporting, they're going to make decisions about whether or not the district really supports this effort. Student engagement. There's already, there are already a lot of examples where students have taken the bull by the horn, if you will. Brookshire, for example, has a diversity committee that students run. So that type of example is an example of getting students to be engaged and involved in the conversation. So a community perspective, again, having parents involved, if it's attending meetings such as these, the meetings that the district-wide diversity committee have are all open, so we have a lot of people who come in and out, but we have had a critical mass of people who have really, really shown their commitment, their passion for this work, and it's been amazing. And when you think about where this work has gone in the time that we have had this committee in place, there has, there have been a lot of things that have happened, but only because those parents or those people from the district are committed to making sure that we do things. From a partnership perspective, it's important that we find opportunities outside of our bubble and figure out how do we connect with things that are going on in the community. So if you're familiar with CoSi's Race Exhibit that happened a little bit over a year ago, that was a partnership example of the district who had folks who said, "We know, here's our curriculum. We're going to look at the curriculum or the learning points or targets that the CoSi Exhibit on Race is trying to promote." How do we find synergy with those so that the kids who go down for the exhibit, which was done on a grant, by the way, so that the taxpayers are aware of that, that we can have people who are there, those young people, have an experience that now they can connect with when they go back to their classrooms? So that partnership is an example of the type of partnerships that will hopefully make this effort a complete effort. So those eight drivers, if you will, are the way that the diversity committee with the leadership of Dr. Lucas have moved forward, because what this could have been is an effort that had no strategy, that we were just kind of excited that we came to meet once a month or whatever it might be, but didn't have a goal or didn't have parameters to operate it. So I hope that as you hear that, you'll feel comfortable and be excited that there is a real, real deliberate process behind making this effort work. Tangible outcomes, I'll go through them quickly, but the ones I highlighted in red I'll leave because I have two slides following this one that will hopefully be a deeper dive. So again, we talked about the CoSi exhibit. That's one real tangible outcome. A grant was secured from a local organization, and the kids were able to go down and have a great experience. Unless in two years, the district has doubled the number of minority educators. One of the things that is exciting about that piece, and I said I wouldn't do this here, but I'll do it now. A lot of these things that have happened have happened because the committees that were formed made strong recommendations, recommendations that were presented to Dr. Lucas, recommendations that were approved, and honestly, from a person who's done this work for so long, recommendations that were approved without any pause, with the notion of, you know what, this makes sense, we're going to do it. And those committees who have brought those recommendations forward through myself and Gail who present them, they've all been thought out, thought out in a way that you would all be proud, I think, as people who represent the district at your level. Annual district-wide training, curves, so that both teachers and principals go through learning experiences. They may include in this, I'll download a bit, at both five, videos like Blue Eyes, Brown Eyes, which is essentially a video by a woman named Jane Elliott that happened years ago. So one may challenge the, how current that video is. The example and the lesson of having young people be influenced about being on the inside group versus the outside group is still a very real feeling. So those type of learning examples have happened, and principals and teachers alike are going through those training courses so that they are well aware of what has to happen for them to be stewards, if you will, of creating an environment in the classroom and for parents that is supportive of everyone's differences and perspectives. The last one, and I'll go back to four and six, secure the grant to fund projects for 2012 and 2013. Again, always looking for ways to make sure that we don't tap into, you know, some of the financial resources the district might have, so we can find those outside. And I think that's what you also get with this group, a breadth of ideas of where to go to find ways to make sure that we can, we can pay for things. And I had the opportunity to be at the last board meeting and heard that conversation around, you know, calling it and taking resources. We're not taking from to do something else. We're trying to make sure that this work happens in a way that is fiscally responsible, but also impactful, because as the district, we have to do better at this conversation around diversity and inclusion. So four and six, again, a recommendation from one of the committees to hire someone on the inside, at least at a part-time status of, now there is someone on the inside that can say, "I know that principal at that building, I used to work in that location, I can connect them with this person. That person, Heather Camacho, who is that diversity coordinator." So the slight differences in roles is she works here, I work, but I'm invested in this work. Dr. Melanie Killen, in October, a noted authority and researcher on this conversation, particularly around young people and how they interact with others, came and visited us October of 2012. She was the lead researcher on the Anderson Cooper Project around children and race. So we were really, really ecstatic that we had somebody at her level with her ability and background to be part of this conversation. One of the deeper dives was a vote around the coordinator role and putting things in place that really allow us to make sure that we do this work every day. So there's now a diversity liaison network, which is essentially allowing people to have resources inside of a building, you know, that go-to person that can make sure that they can communicate back to central office about concerns and questions that might have to be answered in real time. Moreover, these individuals are part of a year-long course, such that they're trained in delivering diversity-related professional development throughout the year. So identifying people who I would call, from a corporate perspective, diversity champions, that are those people that can actually carry forward the work every day, are the people that you want to make sure that you have in place so that the work continues and it lives on. Town hall meeting, we talked a little bit about that earlier with Dr. Killen. There's a quote up top that I thought was really interesting that we heard from a parent. And she said, you know, "As I heard Dr. Killen's conversation, as a white parent in the district, you know, one that was born and raised here in Ohio, this was eye-opening for me. This was uplifting so that I could figure out, you know what, there are things that I probably haven't done and challenged myself on." And that's not to say that, you know, a black parent might not have said that, but what this is to say is that it's about making sure that all of us who are involved in this conversation are doing it in a way that is thoughtful, that is eye-opening, and that we're self-aware of where we are or where we're not. When you look at this slide, which, what I like about it, and the red is intentional, I didn't kind of fall asleep, this is, that's what I wanted. Social skills are really an output of children working together and connecting with people from different backgrounds. That is just the research. Because of that, that leads into academic success, that's predictive of future success, reduces bias, it creates team collaboration, all the things that we want to have happen for our children. So when you think about what this work really means, it's not about, again, moving something from one side of the coin to the other, it's about making sure that we do the best that we can do for a district that looks different than it might have looked 10 or 15 years ago. Some of that I've already said here, but the truth is, you know, this is not a transactional activity. You know, we're not trying to take away something from somewhere else. Work around diversity is complicated, and if you don't make sure that you're doing it and you're focused on it, you'll inevitably have conflict, because you won't have prepared people to interact with differences. You won't have the ability to make sure that people understand how to maybe teach or get through to a student who, for them, English is not their first language. Or, you know, the use of a word for them may be different than it might have been used in their home country. So there's that subtlety that we have to be thinking about all the time. The one in red here, which is really, you know, interesting, and I think we should think about it, is teaching our students to listen, understand, incorporate multiple perspectives, and think critically about the world around them is just simply quality education. I mean, as we think about who we are in Columbus and places that we might have lived our whole lives, we often forget about that there's a bigger world out there. And we can't really prepare our children for that world without really focusing on an initiative like this, which is why I enjoy doing this work professionally for so long. I would never put my bosses, but sometimes I'm telling you to work, it's just like, we're doing this because we have to. Next steps, and I think I'm well into time, so I guess I'll leave time for questions. But the next step, this is the last slide that I'll share. The bio follows, but it's unnecessary for this conversation. There's a website that will be launched, focused just on, you know, the initiative and what we're doing. Now, the diversity tab, if you will, call it that, does exist already. If you're able to often find it by clicking Dr. Lucas's, you know, photo and drilling down a little bit more, but this gives you more exposure to it so that people don't have to dig and wonder, are we really talking about this? So more of a tool, more of a portal, a holding pattern of all the things that are going on, the things that I probably haven't even had time to mention because of the time that we have here. But also four graduate-level courses to be offered on OPDA, which I know is a term that you use, I was trying to figure that out, but I didn't do it. From January through June, we like to diversity and equity, but again, making sure that we continue to invest in the educational part of this initiative. Middle and high school buildings, middle school and high school buildings will have student groups by the end of the year, and teacher leaders of student diversity groups will have training and support from that grant money that I talked about. So as I begin to take questions, I guess what I'll try to do is I'll try to put this in a box. For me, when you think about this work, and you go back to those subcommittees, and you think about the strategy that's moving this initiative forward, they're all inextricably linked. So how do you, how do you communicate this initiative, inside, outside, is also tied to how we hold people accountable inside and outside. It's also tied to how students are engaged in their classrooms, because the student who is put off because somebody hears, you know, a slur about being gay or being Jew or whatever it might be, and doesn't feel that there's support in the school system for them, they're not going to be themselves, they're not going to be engaged. You're not going to have them be that productive student. So we have to figure out how to train people so that that doesn't happen. So when you think about all of those pieces working together, it's really like a, and I'm not a, you know, really proficient with cars, but all those pieces that operate, it's like that happening. If one, or if one thing goes out of whack, then everything else goes out of whack. So I kind of went through that fairly quickly, but I hope it gives you a perspective of what has been happening. I think the board would be proud and excited if you attended the meeting, because you would see that there are parents and faculty and teachers and everybody in between who bring this this perspective of diversity that you don't even think about. If it's Muslim parents, if it's white parents who have adopted Black or Asian children, if it's Black parents who have been here and have had kids who are going through the system, all those things come together. You don't know anybody's story until you know them, and that's what you find in these committee meetings that we have. Now, it doesn't mean that it all goes smoothly, because we kind of talk about things with a lot of, you know, passion, but we get it done. So I think I'll pause there, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
I have questions. First of all, I just want to tell people, this is a great example of a volunteer committee that's doing great things in our district. So I really appreciate your time, and our committees are invaluable to the district. But what I need to know is, are you getting enough support? Do you need the board? What do you need from the board? Is there anything that we can do to help you facilitate anything, or, you know, you may not know it now, but...
Oh, I do.
Okay. So... So how can we be of an assistance to you?
I think, and I appreciate the question, I think what we need from the board is, one, your awareness that this is out, that we're doing this work, but that you champion the work outside, that you talk to parents, that you talk to teachers, that you talk to building principals, about how important it might be to you. Because again, for me, this work is not only about top-down, so the board, Dr. Lucas, our principal, if, whatever the structure is that you look at, from the board's perspective, you are representative of all of us. So if you're not talking about it out there, then they might not, they might wonder if you even care about it. And it doesn't mean that I expect you to do, you know, what we may do at a board meeting or a committee meeting, but it does mean that there's awareness of this conscious behavior that happens. Or even, in worst-case scenario, if somebody says something or does something, and you're like, "That shit's not cool," let you say something. Because oftentimes, when things are said that are inappropriate, the absence of it being challenged means that it was true to the person who saw it happen. So as a board, we want you to do that. We'd love for you to come to the meeting every now and again, if you could, just to hear it for yourself, so you can tell your own story, but I think if we had your involvement from that level, it would be huge.
Any other questions?
We talked about having diversity training, that's next meeting.
Next month.
Is it next month?
Next month.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Great job.
Thanks, Heather.
Okay, next up is Mr. Rafe. I'm making a attempt at his title, but it seems to be not the right title. He's going to give us an update on the change in graduation requirements in the district.
He makes it up.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Executive Director of...
He makes it up.
Thank you. I didn't want to spoil it.
Executive Director of...
Or if somebody says it changes...
It was secondary learning.
It changes every time it's printed, so make sure you get it printed in paper.
Executive Director of... But then I got all the elementarys, too. So...
That's all I can do.
That's all I can do.
I know.
I love to challenge.
Mr. Comrade, you can help me out there? Oh, I, yeah, all right, thank you. Well, good evening and Happy New Year. I'm just going to talk to you briefly here about first reading of a modification to policy 5460, which we're proposing that we modify some of our graduation requirements for the class of 2015 and beyond. So next year's seniors, which are the class of 2014, will not be affected. So, I don't know what that little box is there. Type, oh, but sorry about that. Just some key points, and you all have in front of you a chart that highlights what would be in the new policy. There's a, this chart is in the new, is in your current policy, we would just be modifying it. We're proposing that we phase in these graduation requirements as the kids move through the, through the program, so the class of 2014, which would be next year's seniors, would graduate with the same graduation requirements that they currently have. When you make these changes, you just don't do something to people in their last year. You know, you want them to kind of... What's that? I say, unless, maybe ODE does... Yeah, sometimes ODE does that, too. Correct. I say that quietly. Sorry. We do not, we are not reducing, proposing reducing the graduation requirements. We are still, we currently have 22 total credits to graduate, as you see in that chart. That was the class of 2014, which was the first class affected by what's referred to as the Ohio Core. The minimum graduation requirements in the state of Ohio are 20, so we require 22. So the class of 2014, the key change for the class of 2014, back when the Ohio Core was adopted, was that they were the first class that had four years of math as a graduation requirement. So moving forward, though, for the class of 2015, we have a couple local requirements that we've had on our books for a long time. One is a course called Personal Finance Post-Secondary Planning. That's a course we currently teach to our junior students. It was a course for years that we called Career Exploration, that we taught to the, to the ninth-grade students, and we have one full-time staff member in every building teaching this class. We are still, we're going to propose to offer Personal Finance and a course called Post-Secondary Planning, as separate elective courses for kids to take, for those kids who want to take those courses, but heading it as a separate graduation requirement, we're proposing that we eliminate that moving forward.
Can you say it's currently a local requirement? You mean local, just to all intent?
Correct. We are the only district in our comparison group that offers that course or teaches that type of course.
And Stacy and I are grinning, because this course, it sounds like a great course, and our kids have taken it.
Yes.
But what it does, and it did this to Mr. Rafe's child as well, is that it gets in the way of your AP course workload. And so those kids who want to really push themselves and take those AP classes, you can't take one because you have to get this half-credit in somewhere. Did you pay for it?
She took it online.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, if, one way to do it was to pay for it and take it online, you know, it just threw a whole wrench in your schedule, your junior year, when you're really trying to ramp up for those college applications. So thanks for taking it away after my daughter graduated.
We're, well, we're, the Personal Finance class was a course that was, switched to a requirement when the state mandated that all students have some type of financial literacy standards, and we had the choice then to put those financial literacy standards in the Personal Finance course or into an economics course. And so we believe, and that was a few years back when we did that, at the time we made that decision, I don't know that it was the right decision, so moving forward, we're proposing that we, currently, we require three and a half credits of social studies. The state requires three, most of our comparison group requires three. So we're proposing that we move the social studies requirements to three credits, but make one of those required courses the economics course. And so the kids who are currently sophomores will be required to take a course in economics. And given the state of what we've experienced for the last five years, I don't know anybody who doesn't consistently talk about the economy, and I think that's, I have some rationale for all of this as we move through. So again, the class of 2015, our current sophomores, this is changing the, changing the game on them midway through their, their high school careers, but they do have two years to take that course. So we believe there's enough time to get that in there and enough opportunity.
So there's picture of, so if you eliminate it as a requirement, it doesn't mean that class goes away, they can take it as an elective?
Typically, and what drives our electives is our student choice. We've got a lot of courses on our books. Some schools offer, some schools don't, based on student scheduling preferences. But the Personal Finance class is, it's in-depth, it covers a lot of, you know, some investing, there are different standards that aren't in the economics course, there, you know, in the post-secondary planning, you know, college, college selection process, career interests, those kind of things. I think there's a lot of value in it for kids who need it, but to say that they all need it, you know, that's, that's where we are with that. So that's for the class of 2015. The class of 2016, which are our current freshmen moving forward, the only thing different for them is that we are proposing that we eliminate speech as a graduation requirement in addition to the other, other changes for the class of 2015. Speech, again, is a local requirement, we've had that on our books for quite a while. We, the speech curriculum, again, it's a separate semester elective, one other school district in our... One other school district in our comparison group offers that as a separate graduation requirement.
Is it public speaking or is it grammar?
Public speaking.
Oh.
Correct. So, and then for the incoming freshman, moving forward, incoming freshmen would have the same graduation requirements as the class of 2016. The rationale for this, Mr. Comrade, you like another slide?
Mr. Dunbar.
There's no rationale.
Must have lost a slide somewhere. Sorry about that. But the rationale for basically for these things as we move forward, if you recall, when we did the Project 2020 presentation, taking away some of these local decisions, requirements that old Tangi has, will give our kids more flexibility in all of their scheduling choices. We still have 22 credits for graduation, so we know our kids are going to have very robust, very robust college profiles. So it's not reducing what we are creating for our graduates. The requirements of speech in Personal Finance, Post-Secondary Planning, we're essentially duplicating curriculum, and we believe those standards are taught in other courses. This is especially true for speech with regards to the Common Core, the type of students will be doing the same types of activities all throughout their English Language Arts curriculum as they move through the school years. As I said previously, increasing the flexibility in scheduling is huge for our students. A major factor in this, though, is that we'll spread our staffing across more departments, which will lead to reduced needs in the future. For example, we dedicate one and a half teachers in each high school for speech. And if we eliminate that as a graduation requirement, those teachers will teach English classes. So as our enrollment continues to arise, we won't have to hire as many English teachers in the future. So that's four and a half future staffing positions we won't need in the future. And the same thing would hopefully hold true with the Personal Finance and Post-Secondary Planning, because you're spreading their electives all throughout, through all the departments. Kids can take a math class instead of a, they can take multiple music classes, those kind of things, and you're able to absorb the growing students more efficiently.
And just to verify, Mr. Rafe, the speech will be offered as an elective?
Correct.
When we say eliminate, we just eliminate it as a requirement?
As a requirement, yes. And we keep them on the books, and we watch that over the years as enrollment in those elective courses ebbs and flows. I think our teachers do a great job of identifying things that they think the kids will be interested in the elective areas, and they design courses and bring them to us. We have a new course approval process, and we add or delete courses from our selections based on what the kids are interested in.
Right.
I just think you'll hear a lot of feedback. I mean, even I look at these and as much as I complained about, to you, about Personal Finance and Post-Secondary Planning, those are all skills that are so critical. And I hear that a lot from parents of, I, those are things, and I would say the same thing about speech. So I just want to make sure we're real clear as we go out with this, that those courses are available and that it's covered somewhere else, especially from a speech, you know, they just text all day long. So, and anything that can get them up in front of groups, and in the corporate sector, you see that a lot, that, I mean, people are still taking Toastmasters courses because they're not used to getting up and giving speeches. So anything we can do to enforce that those courses are available, but also that even though they've gone away as a requirement, that the curriculum is covered somewhere else.
I can assure you that both of those, you know, statements that you're making, Mr. Dunbar, are certainly true. I can also, it's amazing, it's interesting to me, it's like when parents value that public speaking as a, they value it, that's what they encourage their kids to take as electives. It's, you know, they, that they're there and they, this is something I was interested in, so why don't you take it? And I agree wholeheartedly with the value of what those courses, Personal Finance and Post-Secondary Planning, what they offer. One of the things that the kids did in the Post-Secondary Planning class was to create a resume, they create a resume in their English classes, but they created their career passport and put together all of their accomplishments, and that's what they used as their, a lot of times for when they went out to college, you know, scholarship interviews and those things. And those are very valuable. But by the same token, parents can do the exact same thing that I did. I sat down with my son, I put together all of his accomplishments, put a resume together, put it in a binder, and we went off for the interviews. So to make it a requirement, I mean, we'll still have it available for all those kids, but to make it a requirement for all of our kids, a lot of them found duplication through things they already knew and so, that's just kind of where we are with it.
My favorite in the finance class was she had to research credit cards and look at credit card offers and decide which one would be the best and save the most over, if they spent $1,000, which one. And it was just like, oh, the lowest interest rate, that's the best. It's like, oh, no, did you see the, you know, so going through that process, which kids just aren't doing in high school.
Sure. And again, I couldn't agree with that whole rationale, but I do wonder sometimes in our curriculum, where are some of those responsibilities? We keep taking them all on.
Yep.
You know, and I'd rather have under 30 in an English class.
She's in economics now, so she's taking it in.
There you go.
So this is the first reading, right? So we'll discuss it. What I'd like to see for the second reading, if we take any action, is what's the state requirement, what's the peer group, and where do we stand? Well, as you referenced that a few times, it'd be helpful to see that in an exhibit so we can have that context as we kind of move this forward.
And the state requirement...
C-640. Fifty-six forty?
And the, I mean...
I think it's fifty-six forty. Fifty-four, fifty-four, fifty-five.
The state graduate, the state graduation requirement is 20. And we're at 22. I know Pickerington, which is one of our peer districts, they, because of money constraints, they failed levies, they're down to 20. They've dropped those requirements. So those kids get less education than what our kids are getting.
That's what that exhibit will illustrate.
Yeah.
Even though we may be peeling back from requirements, these requirements are still ahead of the benchmark and ahead of the...
And I don't want people to think that electives, oh, electives are not doing anything. There are kids, and a lot of them, that will take an AP Science and Anatomy in the same year, or double up on their math classes. These kids are working extremely hard. And if you've had anyone go through the high school, it's just amazing.
Our students can earn up to, really, they can earn an unlimited amount of credits in a year, depending on what they want to do, but with an eight-period day, they can earn seven, between seven and a half and eight credits, if they don't take any study halls, they can earn up to eight credits. So if they do, and a lot of them come into high school with three high school credits in math, and they take 30, and we have kids graduating with over 30 credits, so it's just like, it doesn't...
Yeah, I don't want people to think that we're...
We have a couple of you that squeak, just squeak over, and we do everything we can to get them there, but that's a, 22 is a fair number.
And I don't think that there are a lot of districts in central Ohio that are doing 22 anymore.
I think a fair number of our students, I bet you, I know, the students that I know have enough credits at the end of their junior year...
Yeah.
...to graduate. And are still taking four and five AP my sister's senior year. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. All right, next item, workers' compensation update.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Iceman, and I'm the Workers' Compensation and Safety Coordinator for the district. And there's been some changes in the past couple of years to the workers' compensation program. I'm going to talk to you just for a couple of minutes today about the changes that have happened in the program over the past couple of years and the cost savings that's been a result of those changes. Give you a little bit of a background. Up until July 31 of 2009, we were in the Workers' Compensation State Fund, which means that we paid a premium to the Bureau based on our total gross payroll. As you can see, in 2009, we paid .00649 of our gross payroll to the Bureau for our workers' compensation coverage. You know, part of the problem with that is that you're paying a premium to the Bureau on folks that are never going to have an injury. As of August 1 of 2009, the Bureau granted us self-insurance. And what that means is that the district now pays for 100% of all the work-related medical expenses and lost time payments for those injured workers that are injured on the job. That premium to the Bureau has now gone away. We do pay a small percentage of lost time claims. Lost time claims in workers' lingo means they've missed eight or more days from work. And those are our big dollar claims. So let's talk a little bit about the numbers. The numbers in yellow are the actual numbers that we've paid in workers' compensation costs. The numbers in blue are the estimated costs. So you can see in 2006, '07, '08, and the first seven months up until that August 1st date of 2009, you can see that in 2008, we paid $414,000 for our workers' compensation program. You skip down to the row below, and you can see in yellow what we've paid subsequently since going self-insured to, as far as our workers' compensation program goes. So you compare, you know, in 2010, we paid $162,000 for our workers' compensation costs. So you can see there's a significant savings in going self-insured. The numbers, if you look again at the top row, the numbers in blue are estimated numbers. Those numbers are based on our actual gross payroll and then the premiums from the 2009 numbers that the Bureau gave us. So if we would have stayed in the state fund, those are the estimated numbers that we would have paid in our premiums for our workers' compensation program. So if you take those estimated numbers, 2009 through 2012, and you compare them against our actual numbers from 2009 to 2012, we've got an estimated, or we've got an actual savings of about $1.6 million in our workers' compensation program in those couple of years. So how did we get there? If you look between 2006 and 2009, we had 21 lost time claims. And those are those high-dollar claims where people have missed greater than eight days from work. From 2010 to 2012, we've only had four of those claims. So you look at the chart below, you can see 2006 through 2012, we've been able to keep our total claims volume about the same, even though our number of employees has increased about 500 employees. We've actually been able to drop our percent injured employees down a little bit since 2009, when we started the self-insured program. So let's talk a little bit about the cost-saving measures that we've instituted since we've become self-insured and we've kind of been in charge of that program. We've increased our claim investigation procedures. You know, we have increased witness statements that we take, we look at videos, we look at any kind of prior history, things like that. We have a real proactive safety procedure implementation. If we see something that could be an issue, you know, frayed mats or places that are not getting salted, you know, we're really making sure that we take care of those situations. We've also been doing a lot of additional safety training. We're doing both online safety training and we're doing in-person safety training when we've got lots of, you know, large groups of folks together. We also have a really active leg duty program, which is a great way to kind of cut down those lost time claims. You know, we work with an employee and we work with their doctor to make sure that we can accommodate their restrictions and we can get them back before that eighth day, and we can save that additional cost. Another thing that we're really able to do since we're doing these claims in-house is we can review our prior claims experience. So give you a little, this is a chart, a little idea of what some of those reports look like. You can see the dark gold bar there, and it says low back area. Those are going to be, again, our high-dollar claims. And in 2010, you can see there's a decent margin of low-back claims that we had. 2011, again, it's a smaller number. In 2012, there's, you know, been a significant drop in those high-dollar claims. So we're able to look at these reports and know where we need to go and what we need to work on. We can also do the same thing with the cause of the injury. We can look at, okay, has there been a significant amount of slips and falls? We can address, you know, where are those coming from and what can we do to make sure that those don't happen in the future?
What's other? So it's the 41% jump?
It, that could be, it's anything that didn't kind of fall into the specific high-dollar amounts. It could be a, you know, a cut with a knife, or, you know, a book fell, or, you know, a vase fell off or something. It's going to, all of those are going to fall into the kind of that other category. The last few things that we really do on an active basis, we have an online safety suggestion box, and the employees all have access to that. And if they see something in their building that they think, or a procedure that they're doing in that building that they think might be a safety hazard, they can input something into that safety suggestion box, and I can take a look at that and say, well, that's something that we need to call maintenance for, or it's a training issue that we need to take care of. We also have a safety newsletter, and we have an active safety committee that is comprised of administrators and teachers and people from food service and transportation. We all take a look at our different departments and make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that the employees are safe. And that's all I have for you tonight, and I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you have any, do you have any kind of recognition safety program? I mean, one thing we found in industry is, that's one of the most effective ways, is recognizing people for safe behavior.
We do, and as part of the safety committee, during Safety Awareness Month, we do have, employees can nominate another employee. Usually, it's teachers or principals that have nominated custodians, and they are, we have, you know, that whole month, every month, somebody is recognized for doing something for that building that's safe, and everyone is, it's announced to the district and they get a sort of thing like that.
And that's one of the big competitive aspects of having things posted that say, so many days without a lost time accident, you know, that I worked a lot in a factory setting, and that was, I mean, that was the big thing, is how high can you get that number? How many, how many days without a lost time?
Yeah, there are some issues and some discussions about doing things like that. Is that going to prevent someone from actually filing a claim? Or letting us know that there's an incident? If there's an incident and someone is hurt but doesn't need to go to the doctor, I still like to know about that because that incident eventually could potentially turn into an accident where someone needs to go to the doctor. So there's discussion in safety circles that that could prevent reporting some of those injuries, so it hurts to say.
Yeah, and I just want to point out that when I first got on the board, we didn't have a formalized safety program. And now that we do have a safety program, it is paying for itself and allowed us to save $1.6 million, you know, in workers' comp fees, and that's money that we want to have internally. Self-insurance works if you have a safety program, and so this is a great example of that. Some people, you know, roll their eyes when they have to go to that safety training class, but as you could see, our claims experience has really gone down, and it really does, it really does work. Yes, we took on more, more risk by going self-insured, but when you do it right, it pays off.
And we do have some kind of catchalls. We do have excess insurance.
Yes, for the majors.
So there's a certain amount that we would be...
Catastrophic.
Yeah, that we would pay, and then that excess insurance would kick in.
Now, why did the state just let us opt out of your own insurance?
You have to apply.
You have to apply, you have to qualify. It's really...
It's a pretty lengthy process, and it's financials, and they kind of go through your claims history, and it's a long process.
Yeah, you have to be financially stable.
You have to have greater than 500 employees and be financially sound before they will grant you self-insurance.
So it's interesting that the government would let that much money go.
Well, one of the, if not the only, but one of the few states that owns the workers' comp, that runs the workers' comp system, if you go to another state, it's like buying insurance, you know, on the market. So, very, it's a, employs a lot of people downtown, doesn't it?
Yes. So, Mr. White, the workers' compensation program is, it's not a nonprofit, but they can't make any money.
Right.
So anything above and beyond, you know, what the payment for the cost of the claims would be, have to go back out to the employers. So they can't make any more money than what they pay out.
And some years, they've gotten caught with poor investments.
Selling coins?
Yeah.
Just so you know, we've not seen the savings in the five-year forecast because we've still had the reserve funds...
Yeah.
...for the losses, but you'll start to see that in the next few years, because we've got that built up now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Shall we?
Second.
Okay, follow-up, please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Technically, yes.
Okay, names, just call back in order at...
7:24.
7:24, thank you. All right, so next item is Public Participation Session Number One, for General Comments. Do we have any?
We have one.
We have one. Carl Solomon, please come up. Carl, you're aware... Are you aware of the guidelines for public comments?
I am, sir. I am, sir. And I actually only have very short comments tonight. I really enjoyed, by the way, the workers' comp presentation and the diversity one. I wonder, as a resident taxpayer, if there could be a few extra copies of some of these presentations. The board gets a copy. I was interested in those two subjects, and I have since requested from Becky a copy of the, of the workers' comp one. And I had some questions that, for example, was stop-loss premium included in, you know, in the numbers as far as the annual losses are concerned? And are those numbers filled in? Things like that. Which brings me to the second point that I wanted to make, and that is that I really, as you're starting off the new year, I really would like the board to consider changing the format of these meetings. Last year, I think we had one 30-minute question-and-answer session. This year, Kevin mentioned that we're going to four, I think, quarterly question-and-answers. But 30 minutes just isn't enough. It isn't enough time. And I was at the last question-and-answer session. We ran out of time. I think if this board is sincere, and I think you are, in wanting people to have the opportunity to have that kind of exchange, 30 minutes, four times a year, just isn't enough. And I would like to request that there be an opportunity at every one of these meetings to have some type of exchange with the audience, so that we can ask questions as subjects come up. The meeting format is, I don't want to be critical, but it's not very democratic. It's not a format that encourages people to ask questions. And I've been here, when parents have come in and asked about something, you know, they've come up here and made a statement, and they've left shaking their, shaking their heads in disgust about it, because they can't get an answer on something. And I think that, you know, within the reasonable bounds of decorum, it seems to me that this meeting ought to be a format that residents, taxpayers, people with concern about educational programs and concern about what's happening in the schools for their children ought to be able to ask questions and get answers at the time. You know, not the next day, not the next week, not two weeks later, or not by some, you know, having to make a telephone call. A lot of these parents work. A lot of these parents have jobs where it's hard to get to these meetings, and it's hard for them to get into the school district to meet with people. And frankly, it's hard to get on the phone sometimes if both parents work. So, I would just like to request your consideration for changing the format of this meeting to allow some type of question-and-answer. I don't think you need to do both. I frankly think the quarterly meetings are just inadequate, and they're not really going to serve the purpose that I think they should, to allow the kind of question-and-answers. You know, for us, as people that have questions, to come to those meetings, in fact, the last time I, when we had the session, my question was never asked. And, you know, I think there are other people in the audience that have the same thing happen to them. So, that's probably my request. That's all I had to say this evening, and ask for your consideration in that request.
Thank you, Carl. Right into Public Participation, session number two.
We have none.
So, we do have a board action item, but before that, we'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda for, to take up an action item to discuss the replacement strategy for the treasurer. I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Can you discuss?
And just, this is to discuss the process. We're not appointing a treasurer tonight. There's a process.
Yes. So, I guess I'd solicit some feedback from the group on a search process. I've been in contact with.
Would you like me to take the role in that motion first?
I'm.
He's excited.
I'm doing it.
Apparently. Ms. Dunbar? Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
There you go.
So, we do need to discuss how we want to approach the search process. So, as council has advised the board, there's two ways to do one of these searches. You can do a public process, which is, let's say, a fairly standard process whereby you engage a firm, establish criteria, have a candidate list assembled by the firm, run it through some selection criteria, bring a smaller group in, have the interviews, a public meeting, and then proceed from there. There's a second process, which we can consider, which you take a couple board members, they kind of do that effort, and then they bring that shortlist back to the group. I would recommend we go with A, the limited process with the search firm, and we have the public interviews here and the public meeting. And then I think we need to engage a firm to help us, you know, work that process.
I would agree with that. When we did a search, a superintendent search before, we had a firm who sifted through all of the applications that came in, which, if you're a board member and working, it's incredibly time-consuming, and they know what to look for. We had one board member who wanted to look at all of the resumes, because apparently didn't trust the search firm. And what do you know, the five that were picked to interview were the five that would have, that person would have picked to interview as well. So, the firms, I'm sure that we would, search out and use, would be well-versed in this area, and they know more about it than, than we do.
I concur too.
So, I recommend, you know, we should probably solicit a couple of proposals, and then in the January 31 meeting, select a firm and get the process going. The current estimate is probably about three and a half months from start to finish. We'll have our time. And we'll also talk about interim measures at the January 31 meeting, as Becky's last day will be perfect there.
I brought with me, if anyone is interested, the state's requirements for school treasurer. I printed them off. They're online. They're on the Ohio Department of Education's website.
That looks thick.
It is.
Well, it has the school manager licenses in here too. It's the same. But then it also has with that, what the school treasurer to apply for a license, because you have to have a license. And I printed that off too, just so people can see it, because some people think, "Well, I know accounting, I can do this." And there are some state requirements, not our requirements, we're going to have requirements, but the state requirements, you have to have a state treasurer's license. So, they're here.
You said you have copies?
Pardon me?
You have copies?
They can have this one. It's also online at the Ohio Department of Education's website.
You sent this to them?
Yeah, I sent it to all the board members. The board members have it, if they read their emails.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Any other question?
I can start.
So, I'll take, entertain a motion, Board Action Item A, to approve, regretfully.
So moved.
Second?
I will regretfully second.
Okay, discussion?
I just want to recognize Becky for the work that she has done. If you, if you look at the requirements of a, of a school treasurer, you're like, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't realize this." But there, a lot goes into it. It's a different animal. And Becky came in as an assistant treasurer, and then served as an interim treasurer, and has done a great job here. And I'm jealous of New Albany, and mad at New Albany at the same time.
I'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to say thank you, Becky. Being able to attend a lot of meetings and serving in my role over the last three years, the agenda meetings, meetings with Dr. Lucas, where we would sit around and talk about certain items, attending finance and audit committees, et cetera. Becky has always shown a high level of professionalism. I've always enjoyed the fact that she can, she can speak with Dr. Lucas over financial matters and how they tie into the effectiveness and efficiency of the district. And she does it with candor. She does it with a background knowledge of what she's talking about, and with respect and professionalism with Dr. Lucas. And I always noticed about those two, the conversations between the two of them, with a shared professional and mutual admiration, if you will, of their position, respect for their position and for the individual. And likewise, the respect you've shown for board members, always providing information quickly when it was asked, and writing information that was easy to understand, just a great job. It's been great to, over the three years I've been on the board, to have watched that dialogue, and appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I'd echo that, and wish you the best of luck.
I was just going to wish you luck, and I know you're not that far away, and hope to keep in touch. And New Albany's lucky to get you, and they, they have a full slate of things, I'm sure, for you to tackle. And I know you're in that box.
Thank you.
I would like to mention that obviously Becky knows how I feel about her leaving. Even though I'm upset with the ESC, I'm extremely happy for her. It's good to see good work rewarded, and she just is an extremely valuable part of the team. She's also a state leader in her field. I think we're all very much aware of that. And she will be sadly and sorely missed. But again, another thing that Becky has done extremely well is trained and transitioned those individuals that work with her. And I know Todd has been very fortunate to work with her for, I believe, four years now. And we're going to be the benefactor of that, that whole process. So, I definitely wish her luck, and she'll do just fine, I'm sure, and thank her for all she's done.
Thank you.
There is that extra training requirement on how to keep them on time? You have something extra?
I already told Todd that was part of it.
I'm sure there's a separate course for that, some online thing someone can take.
Except, I think she's a little bit more demanding as like.
That's actually the most difficult part of the job.
Exactly. So, let's just make sure that's covered in whatever.
She just doesn't do accounting. She doesn't lie.
I would like to thank everyone. You know, people always say it's with mixed emotions that they resign or move on. And it really is mixed emotions for me. It is an opportunity for me, I think, to go to New Albany. I believe that. But I have had the opportunity here to work with some amazing staff, Dr. Lucas. I appreciate the board giving me that opportunity. So, I will miss Olin TNG dearly. So, thank you.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve Superintendent Action Item A. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Session.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Next meeting, January 31. 6:30?
6:30.
6:30. And the casino night is January 26. Yeah, don't miss it.